All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's, October 23rd, 2017 Town Council Meeting. As always, we open with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, can you say a prayer for Bonnie Blackman and her pastor, Wes?
Absolutely, and a moment for Bonnie Blackman who passed recently. Here, here. Thank you. Mr. Baer, public comments?
I am the executioner. You get four minutes, that's four minutes, I say. You have one minute. One minute. After four minutes, I say you have one minute. Four total of five minutes. If you would like to speak after that, when everybody has spoken, then you may come back for three minutes.
At the end of the meeting.
At the end?
Yeah.
Of the meeting, thank you. Joseph, where are you? Come on down.
Thank you, officer.
You're welcome, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Coranta, 87 Boardman Road. I'm here tonight to show my support for Gregory. He's going to be presenting a disc golf course as his Eagle Scout project. I had the opportunity to meet Gregory. He's a wonderful boy, very nice, well-spoken fellow. And I think all of you that know me well enough now know that anything that would benefit our park and recreation, I'm in favor of. If the committee decides tonight that you guys think this is a good fit for us here in town, I relayed to Gregory that we would be willing to donate to him the aggregate necessary for the project, okay? And I'm not going to get into details because he's going to describe all this to you. But the stipulation would be that that would come out of funds that the town would be responsible for in this project, okay? So, I support the project, I think it's great, he's a wonderful boy, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Tim Oliver, please.
Hi, my name is Tim Oliver. I'm the scout master for troop 31, and I'm here on behalf of one of my Eagle Scout prospects, Gregory Winklestern. He's on the agenda for item six here. I just wanted to say a couple of things about Greg. If there's any doubt, don't let there be about Greg's capability and his drive. Where are you, Greg? See, he's not even here. He's started.
He's already started.
Okay. So anyways, Greg has been, he was my senior patrol leader for our troop all of last year, and while also holding a number of leadership positions throughout his youth. I've known Greg now for almost six years, and he's just an amazing boy. And I just, I could go on and on, but I'm not going to. I just wanted to say that and that, you know, let there be no doubt that this boy can accomplish anything he sets out to. So if there's any doubt about this project and his ability to make it happen, don't let there be any doubt. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Mickey Harkin?
Hi, Mickey Harkin, 11 Meadow Ridge Lane, speaking in behalf of the library. Well, not in behalf of, but in support of. Priorities, we all have them. Whether it's time to make dinner for the family or try to sneak in some well-needed exercise, could be watching TV or deciding to have a conversation with a husband, reading a book or cleaning the house. Priorities are something that no matter what race, sex, or income level, we all have in common. The Town Council has priorities as well, especially when it comes to the funding. Do we pave Town Farm Road or Swire Hill? Do we use a grant for Boardman Bridge or for another project? Do we take money out of the Waste Management Funds for small projects or save until something bigger comes along? The Library of Renovations needs to continue to be a priority in the minds of the mayor and the Town Council. For as long as I can remember, since moving here, the library has always been looking for a way to expand. An ambulance building has been built, turf fields have been built, JPS has been renovated, and yet the library stands still. I appreciate all the support the town has already given towards the library, and I beg of you to keep it a priority in your future funding plans. Speaking of priorities, my son RJ is one of only six freshmen being inducted into the Math Honor Society, and I decided to make this my priority tonight, to come here to speak. Priorities aren't easy, but they are necessary.
Thank you very much. Mark Perrin, huh? Mark Perrin, help! Come on up, Mark. Mark Perrin, 219 Humken Hill Road.
I work in the high school, and as such, I spend my professional life around young people. And unfortunately, I see an awful lot of young people making destructive decisions out of sheer boredom. So I would urge the council to support any fun, affordable, and helpful activities that the town can provide, such as the disc golf course you're going to see. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mark. Peter Mullin, please.
Good evening, Peter Mullin, 64 Old Ridge Road. Thank you, everyone. I just want to speak about item five tonight, concerning Frank Wargo. Frank is such a benefit to this town. As a veteran of the Air Force for four years, dedicated and gave a service. Thank you for that service, Frank. He's been in New Milford for 40 years. He served on more committees, subcommittees, ad hoc committees than anybody else, possibly ever. There is nobody that has given more time and committed himself better to this town than Frank Wargo. Well-educated, bachelor's degree. He has a master's from Southern Illinois in regional planning. Regional planning, exactly what you need when you're on Town Council. His master's in special ed, the education goes on. He always finished everything he did. He's worked with Chestnut Grove, he's worked for the Senior Center, he's worked for Rotary, traveled around the world helping people gain their eyesight. Phenomenal what he's done, but he's ours. Here he is in New Milford. Frank, I am here to say thank you for everything you've done for us over the years. You have bloomed where you were planted, my friend, and everyone ought to give him a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Lisa, I always beat up your last name. Lisa?
Does rhyme with Lisa? Lisa Heda, 11 Buckboard Lane, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. On a completely different subject, tonight I come here as a concerned taxpayer, not as a candidate. I'm concerned because I don't think New Milford residents understand or know the total extent of recent spending out of the Landfield Settlement Fund. I didn't before digging into it. Here's the question, how and where can taxpayers actually see the fund balance and spending? How do we make these numbers visible? Not transparent, that's an overused word with fluid definition, but visible. Can I see it? Can a New Milford taxpayer see it? I've spoken here a few times about process, and let me tell you why I think this part of our process is broken. Our finance director isn't present. Our finance director is not providing monthly reviews to the Town Council as required by our Town Charter. No taxpayer should have to spend hours figuring out what our spending looks like and what the balance of the land settlement fund is. I have a finance and accounting background, and it took me hours. Having someone without a background, how are they supposed to figure it out? The answer is they shouldn't. We should make it easy for them. It is our Director of Finance, Lee Palmer's responsibility to present monthly to Town Council a financial statement, not just an accounting printout, but a financial statement of appropriations, transfers, encumbrances, and expenditures, and such other fiscal data as may be prescribed by the Town Council or Board of Finance. This is straight out of the Town Charter. Further, quote, "He should prepare for the Town Council and the Board of Finance at the end of each fiscal year a complete financial statement and report," unquote. Our fiscal year ended June 30th. I can only imagine what those numbers look like. It's four months later, and we don't have any numbers available to the public. When it comes to the land settlement fund, the numbers, once you find them, they are revealing. I don't think taxpayers have any idea that for the first time in recent history, we've spent more than the annual payment that we take in. Let me repeat that, for the first time in recent history, we have spent more than the annual payment, and the annual payment went up by $1.1 million. During this time period, more than $3 million was spent. These numbers are based upon budget hearing and Town Council meeting minutes as well as annual audit reports. The average increase for the past six years, starting with the fiscal year ending 2011, the average increase was over $700,000. The decrease for the fiscal year ended 2017 looks like $350,000, despite an increase in the payment. What did we spend it on? Ashley has a little spreadsheet that I'll give you, and Stephanie will give you all the data. I've included a list of appropriations in reference to the Town Council meeting minutes and motions when they occurred. That plus the amount for tax relief from budget presentations equals $3 million. I'm not here to debate whether or not the projects were the right projects, it's about the process. What I'm concerned about is when you don't disclose the impact to the fund balance and the public statements are made to the contrary, such as the land settlement fund balance is increasing. The public has no idea what's actually happening. If you're in the right, doing the right things for New Milford, there's no reason to hide how the money's being spent. So let's fix the process. Lee Palmer has a responsibility for making sure we have the financial picture every month. It's his duty and responsibility to you, Town Council, and the taxpayers. And I recognize he had a health issue this year. However, it's also my understanding that he's back full-time, not necessarily in the office, but back full-time. This is critically important. And so just as a little background, this is for Stephanie. So you don't have to worry about the numbers. Here's the copies of the Town Charter with the reference that I'm referring to. And here's my worksheet summary. There's two pages. One is a running balance, it's very simple from the audit report, beginning balance, ending balance, average increase. And the second page is my running total again, from Town Council meeting minutes and motions, plus the budget hearings on the amount for tax relief, and how I came up with the numbers that I just mentioned. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Burrows?
That's a name from the past. That's a name from the past. Yes, it is, isn't it?
Hello, my name is Judy Burrows. I live on 47 Hillendale Drive in New Milford. I moved here in 1972, so that was over 40 years ago. I love this town, I loved raising my children here. They both graduated from New Milford High School, and I love our library. During all of these years, I have seen some good decisions made by the zoning commission and the Town Council, but I've also seen some bad decisions. One of them is use of the Waste Management money, for instance. Therefore, I would say, please, please let the library go forward. Don't let us be backtracking again and wasting more money in more studies and more plans. We need our library. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Dave Lawson, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name's David Lawson. I do serve on the Board of Education, and someone else on the agenda this evening also serves on the Board of Education. Yes, you're all looking at me, Greg, is our student representative on the Board of Education. I've gotten to know him very, very well over the last year or so. He's mentored a new member of the student representatives, and I see he has some others that he's mentoring as well. I really hope, I really hope that you pass this Eagle Scout project. That's a capstone, that's a milestone. This is what part of our community efforts are. Get our children involved. Get them involved. And follow through on that, the leadership skills, everything that you gain from that. So please, I urge all of you to vote in favor of this project this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Carl Dill, please.
My name's Carl Dill. I live at 23 Whittlesey Avenue. That's my wife over there in that colorful blouse. We've lived there for a couple of years, but we've been residents in New Milford for about 36 years. About two years ago, we bought a house at 16 Whittlesey Avenue that was in foreclosure. The sign was out in front, it was very clear. Other people bit on it, we bought it. We spent a fair amount of time, effort, and money in renovating it, talking about a heating system and all kinds of other stuff that doesn't show, and we've rented it out. We're in the market to buy another project to fix up. I spent my entire life in the retail building material business. Some of you might remember that, it used to be where the party stop is now. In any case, I'm prepared to buy 25 Church Street, which I know has been under discussion and has been a point of conflict to some people. I would like to have the town work through a broker. If I had my choice, it would be Todd Sargent, because I like Todd. He worked with us on the house that we bought at 23 Whittlesey Avenue, and he helped us with the tenants at 18 Whittlesey Avenue. In any case, we're in a position to buy that property, renovate it, put it back into useful, tax-paying condition, and I urge the Board to take this subject up and move on this, because I actually have somebody who's interested in renting the first floor of it, which would be kind of cool. It's going to take a lot of money and time and effort to renovate it. I know that, I know that business, and I'm willing to do it. And she's here with me to hear what I had to say, just in case I said the wrong thing.
Nine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Rosaleen Gell, please.
Good evening. Just had a couple of comments. As for number five, item, Councilman Esposito's requested agenda item, it's a moot point. It was rejected, the bid was rejected on merit, and as Mr. Dill just stated, there is opportunity to move forward on it. On item number six, Eagle Scout, please support Greg. We need it. It's a positive thing. And it makes, what enhances it is that Joe Quantrill has volunteered to support the project, so that would reduce any costs that wouldn't necessarily go along with it. As for Hidden Treasures Park, look, who kayaks? I even do. I mean, that's great. If we could fix the portage, if we could get the bond going for that, that would be grand. And then on my last item, the library, please. That's a star in any community. We really need the project to move forward. We have projects there available from the littlest children to the real old people. We just need it to go forward in a reasonable way, and I hope that you will think about that. And the Waste Management Fund, I've read that, all the details over and over and over again, and I can just tell you, that is a resource for the community, for civic and community benefit. It's not to be doing special projects. The money that has been put out towards the turf, if it goes towards the library, if it goes to Pettibone, anything like that, that is a benefit for the entire community, which in effect was affected by the problems with the Waste Management site. That's why we have the money. So it would be an investment in long-term, and please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Grossman, please.
Hi, Andy Grossman, 13 Hilltop View Road. First of all, about the scouts, congratulate the scouts for the project and remind them that when they turn 18, they should all register to vote. Very important. Secondly, the 25 Church Street, the gentleman who was there, I certainly had wished, as a member of the Economic Development Commission, that he would bring his project before us, the EDC, and we'd be very happy to kind of take a look at it as well. I think anything that could be done with 25 Church Street would be great. Number three, the Waste Management Fund. There are legal limitations on what can be spent in the Waste Management Fund, as laid out under the agreement. For instance, it can't be used to keep taxes down to offset taxes. It's only a specific number of projects, types of projects that it can be used on. And the type of projects that has been used on in the past have generally been very useful projects, very good projects, the Riverfront program, for example, as well. So, and the other thing I want to say about the Waste Management Fund is this, and the most important thing is this, until Mr. Gronback took office, the Waste Management Fund was sitting there and collecting no interest, zero interest, just sitting there in a fund. Anybody who knows anything knows that things like pension funds, things like that, are always invested, okay? The council, the mayor, the mayor, has invested the money in the Waste Management Fund over the last two years, and we are now getting a return, we are now getting interest, which for the dozen years or so before that, we were getting zilch. So before we talk about management of the Waste Management Fund, let's talk about the interest that we are getting before we were getting absolutely nothing. And I think the mayor should be congratulated on that for getting interest on the fund. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing that. Finally, the library project. This is a slam dunk, this is a no-brainer. It absolutely goes to the quality of life in this town. When businesses are looking to move into a town, when young families are looking to move into town, the first thing they look at, quality of life, one of the big things they look at is the quality of things like the library. And if anyone comes to visit our library, I have to tell you, they do a great job at the library, but the way the library is now, it's a travesty. We can spend money on turf fields, and that's fine, I'm not going to debate the turf field project, throw some caution to that, but it's a travesty that we are spending money on things like turf fields, but not things like the library. It is absolutely a travesty that we didn't do that. Anyone who goes in there could see that they can't even have room to display all the books there. I've gone in there, and they said, oh, we have to go up to my attic to display all the books. And among other libraries in the area, our library is pretty much known as a joke because of our refusal to fund it. So I urge you to please fund the library. It's a project that goes to the heart of New Milford, and the heart of the quality of life here, and everything we're all about. Thank you.
Jeff Winter, please.
Good evening. Jeff Winter, 22 Maury Road. Sorry that I have to bring on my laptop tonight, but I needed to do a quick check on the Waste Management Fund, which we'll talk about in a moment. But first of all, let's look at this Boy Scout over here, okay? First of all, obviously, he's getting plenty of accolades tonight, but second of all, he's got to be a pretty darn smart politician, because he's coming before the Town Council, right before an election, the very last meeting, so if this kid doesn't get funding tonight, we all know that the Boy Scouts are where they're going to be voting again, so you know, you're going to want to talk to him. The Waste Management Fund, as with all funds of the town of New Milford, do not come out on a quarterly basis like a public company. They come out in an audit. The audit is done annually, the audit is generally published, so for the fiscal year that ended, for instance, on June 30th, the audit typically comes out in December or January, and it's done by a certified public accounting firm. So that is when you get the actual numbers, okay? I mean, you could certainly, on your own time, play around with those numbers, but if you want actual audited data, you wait for the professional auditors to do it. So it's not that there is a mystery out there, that these numbers are being hidden, or that it's a secret, unless you want to hire more staff accountants, and I don't think anyone in this room wants to increase taxes so that we can have a quarterly report on the Waste Management Fund or any other fund in this town. The balance as of June 30th, 2016, actually, for cash and cash equivalents, total assets, I'd hate to leave out the $3. So that's how much is actually audited and in there. And until the next audit comes out, which I would imagine will be in about a month, month and a half, that is when we should go for it. Anything else that you hear or see is strictly speculation. Regarding the matter of ethics, first of all, I'm sorry, library, both for it, right? If Mickey Harkin's for it, Mickey Harkin's for it, I'm for it. Because she's got smart kids. The two gentlemen that have been at the center of, shall we say, an ethical back-and-forth should know, and all of you should know, what this document is. The Code of Ethics. It's not long, it's very simple, it's very straightforward, and I think you get it every time that you get elected for office, if you choose to receive one. And of course, it's also online. What Frank Wargo has done, even though it was after the fact, Frank Wargo has asked for the proper thing, and that is to ask for an advisory opinion from the Ethics Board, from the Ethics Commission. The reason they have advisory opinions is so that public officials and members of the town can get an okay from the Ethics Commission to say, should I do this, should I not? Can I do this, can I not? And those are actually binding, they're legally binding. So they're, for instance, if, let's say Frank or Tom went out, did something, and then the Ethics Commission said it was okay, and it turned out that it was not, the Ethics Commission will stand behind you 100 percent. That is actually in here, under Section E, if you want to look it up. So, I think from now on, and even actually for right now, the fact that Frank has asked for an advisory opinion is the right thing to do, and I think we should wait for that advisory opinion to come forward. But I also think that Mr. Esposito needs to ask for an advisory opinion, because, just because you say, "I have done nothing wrong," it's not your opinion. We can all say, "I've done nothing wrong."
Jeff, you're up, four minutes, please.
Thank you. But it's not up to you, it's not up to me, it's not up to Frank, it's not up to the mayor, it's not up to the town attorney. It is up to the Ethics Commission to make that decision. So I would recommend that I would ask that each of you submit and ask for advisory opinions on what has happened in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
That's the end of the list, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Baer. Moving on to item three, we've got approval of prior minutes, and it's in a motion?
From the regular Town Council meeting minutes of 10:10, 2017. Second.
There was an email request from Mr. Hill regarding his comments. Does anybody want to take that up to modify it?
A friendly amendment to, he was misquoted.
Did you get a copy of his email? I'll give it to you.
Yes, okay.
So, how about, so it's a friendly amendment to revise the minutes in accordance with his email?
That's fine. Second.
Okay. With that friendly amendment, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item four is Mayor's comments. I do have a couple of things that I do want to address. The first one is the presentation of a proclamation to Veronica Ronnie Burns Bradley. Ronnie, if you don't mind me calling you that, is here today, and she's sitting right here, and we've got this lovely framed poster from World War II, and that's actually Ronnie in that poster, and she's got this. So, rather than paraphrasing, I'll read the proclamation that I have, and then I'll present it to Ronnie. So whereas, I'll stand over here, so she... Veronica Ronnie Burns Bradley was born on December 19th, 1922, in Queens, New York. She had, she puts it, "a very mundane life," since she was raised in a convent with nuns and then lived with a foster family. And whereas it was a fluke stemming from Ronnie's love of hats, that started her on her lifelong love affair with the U.S. Marine Corps. In 1943, at her lunch hour, she stopped to look at an empty store window and at a picture of a female wearing a Marine Corps hat, and it said, "Join the Marines, Free Our Marines to Fight." She immediately enlisted and was placed in aviation repair. And whereas Ronnie completed basic training at Hunter College in the Bronx, then was sent to Indiana University for further training, and finally to California. Two men were stationed there with her retirement power and Whitey Marvin, later known as Lee... Marvin. Because of the news coverage of the newly-formed female Marines and to encourage enlistments, Ronnie was selected to be the Marine Corps Posta Girl. And whereas Ronnie's love for the Marine Corps continued after the war, her marriage and while raising six children, including one with special needs. She was active with the Marine Corps League, worked with Toys for Tots, and Food for the Hungry. "We believe in taking care of our own," she said, and stated that veterans are getting old and many need extra help. Whereas for some women, a lovely evening gown, furs, or exquisite piece of jewelry would be their apparel of choice. But for Ronnie Bradley, her clothing of choice is her Marine Corps uniform, worn with pride at every occasion. December 5. Now I therefore, David R. Gronback, to hereby express the honor and gratitude of the town of New Milford to Veronica Ronnie Burns Bradley for her dedication and service to our country. Thank you. We'll be displaying this poster of Ronnie in town hall for as long as we can. So thank you so much, Ronnie. It still looks like you, actually. I can see it. Thank you so much. Thank you. It's a pleasure for us. Beautiful. Great job. Great piece of history. Thank you. A couple, yes, Mr. Bear?
Oh, you're still on?
I'm still on. Give me a couple more things. I know, I should end on a high note. But I do have a couple of other positive things, so... Very nice. So in the past couple of weeks, I want to thank our tax collector, Nancy McGavick. She was successful with our tax collection attorneys in collecting $1.5 million, over $1.5 million in back taxes. We appreciate it, and it really does make a big difference to our bottom line. So thank you to Nancy and to Attorney Cohen for that. I want to encourage people to participate in the Substance Abuse Online Survey. It's a survey that's being sponsored by H.B. Casse, and it's an opportunity for us to get additional data about substance abuse and mental health issues in the community. You can find it on my Facebook page, but also on the Substance Abuse page as well. It'll be shared online. Please participate in that. Like Ms. Francis had said, I want to express the condolences on behalf of the town for the passing of Bonnie Blackman. Bonnie was a lifelong resident of New Milford, has spent 30 years working for local banks. She was active in the community, serving on the Board of Directors for the New Milford Rotary Club, the Greater New Milford Chamber of Commerce, New Milford Center Cemetery, and Morningside Cemetery. Bonnie was also a member of the New Milford Board of Realtors and the Greater Fairfield County CLMS. Her contributions to our town are greatly appreciated, and they will be missed. I want to encourage people to participate with the Women's Club and the United Way as they hold their annual Stuff the Gazeebo event on Saturday, November 4th. This is a great annual tradition in which we collect donations during the Thanksgiving season for needy families. And it's from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the gazebo. Each year, the two organizations provide complete Thanksgiving meals for over 200 families in New Milford, and they are asking each person to bring non-perishable items to stuff the bandstand. And as it's October, the Parks and Rec Department will once again be holding their trunk-or-treat event on the Green from 5:30 to 7:30 on Halloween, October 31st. This is a great alternative to trick-or-treating on dark streets. Parks and Rec are asking for donations of a bag or two of candy to help feed all those scary trick-or-treaters, and donations can be dropped off at the Parks and Rec office at the Pettibone Community Center or at the mayor's office. And I do want to put, I want to put out there that through the efforts of Dan Sullivan, Walter Bowden, and Ray Crawford, we are looking at an outdoor monument to our World War II veterans, and it's very fitting that we have Ronnie here today. I think building off of the success of our Vietnam Memorial that we had on the Green the past year, these veterans of World War II, Walter Bowden, had visited me in my office and asked to spearhead a campaign to create a World War II monument. And one of the spots that we were talking about is at the Pettibone Community Center. So one of the ideas is to have the flags of each service around the elliptical driveway with lights on it and then a bench. So we will be working with Mr. Bowden and Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Crawford, and anybody else that's interested in this project should certainly contact my office, but it's a great thing, and it's a great tribute for our World War II veterans. And with that, we will move on to item five. Mr. Esposito, this is your agenda item.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes. Mr. Bear?
I'd like to suspend the agenda to move item number six up. The Eagle Scout project before Councilman Esposito's requested agenda item. If that's okay with the council?
Sure. Let's get a sense. Mr. Esposito, you think it'll take a while, or is it's...
Absolutely. Okay. Quick, but I'd rather do the Eagle Scout first.
The Scout, Scout project?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of suspending the rules and switching the agenda items?
Aye.
Okay. Was there a second? Ms. Lundgren will second. We've got a unanimous in favor. All right. So let's go to item six, and Mr. Winklestein, your project for the disc golf, the disc golf course at Clatter Valley Park. And the floor is yours, sir.
First thing I'd like to say is just that I've learned a lot throughout this journey, but I've never learned that technology always fails, as my history teacher has taught me, and you can never rely on it.
Fair enough.
You got it, Joe?
Why don't you start by telling us, what is disc golf? I don't think a lot of people even realize what that is.
I have no idea what that is.
Yeah.
What's a pilot's favorite letter?
Thank you. I'm also learning I don't public speak very well.
No, you're doing great.
Don't worry.
All right. So yeah, what is disc golf? You've got such a great knowledge of it. You know, you were talking about that you played it before. So tell me a little bit about it. You know, is it like golf? Is it like frisbee, or is it both?
So I'll read you here from the Professional Disc Golf Association. This is straight from their website. What is disc golf? Disc golf is played much like the traditional golf. Instead of golf, instead of balls and clubs, however, players use a flying disc or a frisbee. The sport was familiarized in the 1970s and shares with the golf ball the object of completing each hole in fewer strokes. Each disc golf is thrown at a target area, which is a hole. The hole can be a number of disc golf targets. The most common is the basket. As a player progresses down the fairway, you or she must reach each consecutive throw from the spot where the previous throw had landed. The trees, shrubs, and terrain changes located in the area around the fairway provide challenging obstacles for the golfer, as much like sand pits in golf. Finally, the putt lands the basket, and the hole is completed. Disc golf shares the same joys and frustrations of traditional golf, whether it's sinking a long putter hitting a tree halfway down the fairway. There is a few differences, though. Disc golf rarely requires greens fee. You probably won't need to rent a cart, and you'll never get stuck with a bad tee time. It is designed to be enjoyed by people of all ages, male and female. That's, once again, just from the Professional Disc Golf Association, their description of what disc golf is. Now I'd like to go and explain a couple of statistics I have also from the Professional Disc Golf Association. The sport was only invented in the 1970s, so you can see the sport's still growing very steadily. The number of disc golf courses went from approximately 100 internationally in 1975 to over 2,500 in 2008. Active Professional Disc Golf Association members went from about 4,000 in 1996, when the Professional Disc Golf Association was founded, to over 12,000 in 2008. And the Professional Disc Golf Association pro per size went from under $400 in 1996 to over $2 million in 2008. And these statistics stop at 2008 because since then, all three of these statistics have been growing at 20% each consecutive year. The sport has exploded. And as well, ultimate, ultimate frisbee and disc golf are being seriously considered as an Olympic sport. I also have a pie chart here showing the age distribution of disc golf players, and the over 75% of players are between the ages of 20 and 50, which is quite surprising, similar to golf. So you can see that disc golf really is a sport for all people, of all ages. Moving on, I'd like to talk about why this would be good for New Milford. So as I say, there's no greens fee. This is free to all citizens. It's water.
Let me ask you this. This is really important. Do you have to wear like those plaid pants that they wear during golf? Or is the uniform a lot more kind of...
I think it's suggested, but it's not necessary.
All right. That's important.
So this is catering to the demand of the latest popular outdoor recreation. As I said, this sport's exploding internationally. Courses are now being made in Sweden, Japan, Germany, France, all over the world, but the United States is taking this initiative. This recreational sport provides enjoyment to colleagues, family, and friends of all ages. This sport allows for team-building activities, friendly tournaments, regular weekly league play, birthday celebrations, fundraising for charities, clinics and lessons for the sport, and daily casual play alone with one person or a group, family, friends. To the city. This project benefits local schools, universities, and residents. This will increase the economy, sales tax revenue from lodging and meals, also in the community. I can't tell you why I'm crying right now.
No, that's a lot of pressure. Don't worry about it. You know, you're on the spot. You're doing great, man. You're doing all right. Don't worry about it. You're doing great. Why do you like Clatter Valley for this? You know, I'm assuming you looked at a bunch of different properties around New Milford. What is it about Clatter Valley that, you know, got you excited for this?
Clatter Valley, I looked also at Zaga Meadows.
Oh, yeah.
And Harryburg Park. Clatter Valley is a beautiful New England area, as we've all seen. Clatter Valley besides the cricket club, it's a very, and casual dog walks. The park isn't used for much else, and it's a beautiful area. The objective of disc golf is to bring people... To bring people into the environment we have, and to enjoy, to enjoy the environment we have, not develop it.
Yeah, yeah. So I know you went before Parks and Rec also, right? You know, and they sent a letter saying that they were very impressed with your presentation, and they are in support of disc golf. Let me read that so that everybody's got that. So Gregory Winklestein approached the Parks and Rec Commission on July 17th and September 18th with the idea of creating a disc golf course at one of the town parks. After lengthy discussions weighing the pros and cons, it was decided that Clatter Valley Park would be the ideal spot, excuse me, for such an endeavor, offering open fields, wooded hillsides, trails, and available parking. The Parks and Recreation Commission approved of the concept of a nine-hole disc golf course pending land use approval from the towns of New Milford and Bridgewater. Once the design plan has been rendered, it must come back to the Parks and Rec Commission for final approval. We wish Eagle Scout candidate Winklestein the best of luck as he goes forward with this ambitious project. And it is one of the most ambitious Eagle Scout projects, I think, that I've ever seen. You know, so I love it. It's great. You've taken a lot on your shoulders. Yeah, Ms. Francis?
Yes.
So I have, I know, a couple days over 50, but I did play this.
I don't know that that was so fun.
Did you enjoy it?
So my question is, it was more casual. It wasn't structured quite the way you're going to want to do this. So could I bring my own frisbee? Or like, when you go to a golf, you like it, it's golf. So you go there, and you can rent clubs. Could I rent a frisbee?
Since this will be on a public town park, not a private...
Oh, so we just bring our own equipment?
You bring your own equipment. But you can compare this to a sport like golf, where you need to, you have your whole bag of clubs, golf balls, tees. I don't play golf, but I know it's, I know it's not a cheap sport. For disc golf, all you need is a putter, a mid-range, and a driver. That's all you need, and you're talking about $15, so...
And then would have the, you're talking about the kind with cans?
No. So a rubber tee pad on the ground where you throw it from, and then a steel basket to target.
Oh, sounds great. And clearly, you can do it when you're 50.
Yeah, it's, it actually is great for like, you know, generations, right? You know, multi-generation. Grandparents with grandkids, and you know, everything in between. Yeah. Mr. Bear had a question.
The question is, to sort of lapse into Bridgewater, we need, we need permission from Bridgewater to do this.
So that's, that's the only thing. I did speak with Curtis Reed in Bridgewater. We've got, you know, informal approval, but we did speak with legal, and you know, since we're doing construction on their property, we just, there's intergovernmental agreements that, you know, we do sign often. They're not unheard of. It's just that it's, it's an important formality that we'll take care of. So that's why we were saying, let's, let's do the presentation today. Introduce everybody to this concept. I'll work, you know, with our town attorney to get the agreement with Bridgewater squared away, and we'll line up the funding. We'll figure out, you know, what work needs to be done, and I think everybody's going to be in favor of it. I mean, it's a win-win. I'd love to bring more, you know, these teams into town and have kind of, you know, tournaments and conferences, and you know, you couldn't ask for a better place on Clatter Valley. I think you said that where you're proposing this is kind of overgrown right now and not really being used for much, right?
Yes. So a good portion of this project will, we will be going in, and we will have to do small maintenance. Once again, not if we have to possibly take down a couple of big trees, but besides that, we're just taking out undergrounds. If anything, we'll be taking out invasive plants and planting in native plants, so actually helping the environment.
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, Ms. Lundgren's got, oh, Ms. Lundgren is the best.
I just have a question. If you're bad at golf, can you play disc golf? Because I can't hit a golf ball to save my life.
Yes.
But I don't get the connection between the frisbee and a putter? Like, the putter that you use for golf, and you have a frisbee? I don't know. I have no idea how this game is played.
So each disc, there's a putter, a mid-range, and a driver, and each varies by weight? So the driver you can, is lighter, and you can throw it further. So just like golf.
Right. So they're all frisbees, they're called...
They're all frisbees, they're just different weights.
Right, right. So the driver might be a bigger frisbee, the putter might be a smaller frisbee, as you try to kind of get closer, you know, a little bit more accuracy.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't think my husband would go with me, though.
Should I go into the budget?
Could I, could I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, Ms. Francis.
So where do you play now?
Right now, the nearest course, I believe is about a half hour away. I believe there's one in Waterbury. I haven't played nearby because I've looked at the reviews. Everything's overgrown, not maintained, and the thing about disc golf is, is if things get too overgrown, if there isn't, then it's, the path of the disc allow, it's difficult to...
Just like golf, you got to have a mode. What got you into this sport?
Good question.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm a huge ultimate fan as well.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a nice combination of ultimate and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't know if we're ready for that.
And I've been trying to start an ultimate team at the high school.
Yeah.
Last year. Last year.
Really?
Yeah, it's fun to start, you know, I think it's great. Yeah, Mr. Bass, I know you had a question.
Greg, how long do you envision it taking uh to actually do the project?
So if everything goes well, the finances pass, and I get the final signatures, through the Boy Scouts, then I can begin fundraising. I then hope to get all the landscaping done by the time frost happens. This will probably take, I'll say, four to five, six-hour days with volunteers to go in and do this landscaping and make sure everything's all set for the designers to come in and have the final layout, all the fairways completed. Then in the springtime, when the frost clears, everything will be landscaped and we'll be able to come in, dig the holes, dump the sand, dump the crushed stone, dump the concrete, lay down the pads, stick the posts in, stick the baskets in, and you're done. And in the springtime, that'll probably take, on the safe side, two to three, six-hour days to place everything.
I'll tell you, Greg's great. Probably for coming up here.
Yeah.
So that should feed you now, you're going over. That's why you're earning that pat.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Thanks, John.
So I, I think this is, this is a lawyer's trick, you know, and it's, they always say, stop when you're ahead, you know, so you've got, when you've won your argument, when you've won your case, knowing when to stop is like very key. So I mean, I, I gotta be honest, I think that there's a lot of support and positivity for this. I don't see anybody having any kind of negative downsides, except that we've just gotta work out some of the logistics over the next couple of weeks with the um, with the governmental agreement, because this, this work will be actually done on Bridgewater's land as well as New Milford's. But it's a great um, it's a great partnership between the two of us. I think they're excited about it too. So, yeah, yeah, you know, and we could talk about getting some of that landscaping done, you know, sooner rather than later as well. But unless you, you wanna go on, I, I think you've done a great job.
Great job.
I mean, I really wanna congratulate you and thank you. This is another thing that will distinguish New Milford. Like you said, there's nothing like this around here. You've gotta drive to Waterbury. And I could really see this attracting people, like our skate park, uh, the improvements to that. I know that people are driven from an hour away, you know, from Westchester to use it. This is another thing that we're gonna draw people in and introduce people to our town and be great for tourism and just be a lot of fun. It sounds like it'd be really great. Just promise we have like a, a town council, you know, a disc golf tournament. It'll be uh, let's make that annual, you know? Because I've seen some of these guys play golf, and we don't wanna do that, but at least disc golf we could do. So what do you think? Anything else you wanna add?
Two things to say.
Two things, alright, hit it.
I think why I'm crying is just because I only hit two of the twenty points I had.
Oh, no, twenty, twenty, I wouldn't tell you that anyway. You're okay.
No, I was up all last night putting it all together.
No, no, you're doing great.
Yeah, great job.
And I must just finish by saying, thank you to everyone that came and support me.
Yes, thank you for all the scouts that are here.
I thank you to all of you for helping me this happen. As you can tell, this is a big passion of mine, and all I wanna do is improve this town.
This is a great step forward. Thank you so much. Thank you, Greg. Okay, we'll go back to item five. We got Mr. Esposito's request. We're on such a positive note, I can't break it down, but Mr. Esposito, do you, you've heard Frank, uh, you know, is, has submitted a request for an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission. Um, so hopefully that addresses, you know, concern, but floor is yours.
I, I just wanna make one statement, and this was not anything personal against Frank. Frank and I have worked together for twelve years. I called his house yesterday to chat with him. You know, I, it's more about hypocrisy. I felt it should have been on the agenda because a hypothetical conflict of interest that I was spotlighted on me two times to town council meetings, plus two articles in the newspaper for something that I possibly was gonna do in the future. But an actual conflict of interest that actually occurred was not on the agenda at all. I would say it's more than oversight, not being on the agenda. My point is if hypothetical scenarios warrant an open discussion, then actual occurrences do as well. This is not a place to litigate this. It is for the Ethics Commission. Just like any potential conflict that was posed against me shouldn't have gone to the newspaper the weekend I went away on my wedding and was gone for two weeks, so I couldn't defend myself.
Mr. Warren?
That's all I have to say.
I don't know where to begin. Uh, thank you for putting on the agenda, because if the process had followed, first of all, what amazes me is I didn't put a letter into the Ethics Commission until this came up, because I didn't think I did anything ethically wrong. So why would I put a letter in unless it was pointed out? Now, let's, let's go over the process. The request or proposal was open to anybody. It went out the first time. Nobody came forward. The highest bid was ten thousand dollars, and that was from the company next door, but we wanted to just tear the building down. And, and I said, it should be on the tax rolls. This, this building could be a benefit to the town. So I'm gonna put a proposal in to renovate it. It'd cost about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to renovate it. And by the way, is he still here? You can have it. I just didn't wanna see the building torn down. Fine, if you wanna bid more than I did, but you know, I might bid again if I can do that. But let's say it did get on the agenda, which would have been here. I wouldn't have been able to speak to them. I would have had to leave, because I would have a conflict if I voted on it and I agree with them. I would have had to, so I would leave. But let's just say it passed. Then it goes to town, the town. It's a town meeting. Everybody in the town can make a decision on whether it should be bought or should be sold. So I don't know where the ethical conflict is. I honestly don't know. But I sent the letter in anyway. I'll let them make a decision. But I really don't think there was anything ethically wrong with what I did. It's not what I do. I'm on the Board of Directors at Chestnut Grove. Over the summer, we had a picnic. Ronnie left. Ronnie was there, and she was talking to me about her life, and she gave me, she gave me that postcard. She gave me that postcard, and I had it blown up, uh, 'cause I think that's a really neat picture. And I said to Dave, you wanna get this on the agenda. Really, we should recognize her, because you wanna get the World War II veterans uh, on the rolls, and she would be a great poster job. That's the kind of thing that I've been doing for forty years. I like doing things to help the town. And I honestly thought that I was helping the town by giving a bid that nobody else wanted that building with me. Now, if that's wrong, I'm sorry.
Fair enough. Anybody wanna add anything else? Okay. Moving on to item seven, entertaining motion.
Uh, motion, let's see.
Appointments and reappointments.
Appointments and reappointments. Uh, motion for the appointment for the Economic Development Committee, Rose Colores, unaffiliated, for ten twenty-three, twenty seventeen, to eleven thirty, twenty twenty.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight.
Um, motion for discussion and possible action on the appointment of Kevin Reynolds, deputy fire marshal, as fire alarm administrator for the town in New Milford.
Second.
Okay, uh, we've got Brian Omen. Our fire marshal is here to speak in favor of this appointment. This is a ordinance that we have. We don't have anybody appointed at this point to be the fire alarm administrator. We haven't followed up on fire alarms in a number of years. I think that's fair to say, Brian. And fire alarms do, they are a drain on our resources when our fire departments have to respond to calls and there are false alarms. So with this, we'll have um, you know, we'll actually be following the procedure where after three strikes, uh, we do issue a fine, but we do need somebody to administer that. And um, like we said, Kevin Reynolds is our deputy fire marshal. It's within his job description. It's the, the perfect fit. And the town needs somebody to start enforcing these rules and regulations. With that, does anybody have any questions for them or? Looks pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. He won't be everybody's favorite person, but you know, it's, it's necessary. Thanks, guys. Item nine.
Motion for discussion and possible action on a request from Commission on the Arts for the closure of the southern, southern crossover on the Green on Monday, December eighteenth, twenty seventeen, from four PM to nine PM for the annual carol sing and characterize with Mrs. Claus.
Second.
Whoa, already.
Everybody knows this, great annual tradition. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's hope for some good weather. Thank you.
Who's Santa gonna be this year?
Snow? Yeah, first, no, Mr. Santa.
Sitting right there. It's only Mrs. She takes the role that day.
Well, she, she's the boss.
Just deal with it. Go play, go play frisbee.
Go play disc golf.
Yeah, go play disc golf.
Item ten, tax collector.
Motion for discussion and possible action regarding October twenty seventeen refund in the amount of three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-seven cents, leaving a balance of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-one cents in the refund account.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven, Hidden Treasures Park.
Motion for discussion and possible action on the author, authorization for Mayor David Gronback to apply for and sign all necessary documents in connection with the Iroquois Community Grant Program. The grant request is in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars, and if secured, will be used for the repair of kayak and portage ramps at Hidden Treasures Park.
Second.
Okay, everybody I think remembers the presentation from the Hidden Treasures Park Committee. Uh, this is right in there, so if we could apply and get this grant, it reduces the amount that they need to upgrade the park as well, and it's, the budget is right in that wheelhouse with eight thousand five hundred dollars in Iroquois. So with that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you Kathy Castaneda, who is preparing that application. Uh, item twelve, planning.
Motion for discussion and possible action for authorization for Mayor David Gronback to sign a letter of commitment for a study screening application to WestCog for a Connecticut Department of Transportation corridor study in conjunction with the town of Brookfield. If the application is approved, funding will be eighty percent federal, ten percent state, ten percent local match, local match to be shared with Brookfield. The town in New Milford, New Milford's five percent match estimated at ten thousand is available in the planning department's budget.
Second.
Okay, so just to give a little background, this corridor study is something that we've been kind of working on with WestCog, which is our regional council of governments. And uh, what it's gonna look at is the corridor between New Milford and Brookfield, that Route Seven corridor. And we're looking at sidewalks, we're looking at pedestrian access, um, and uh, walkways and crossings. So, and pairing it with Brookfield helps us at the end of the day, because the state is looking for more regional funding as opposed to uh, just individual towns. So with the expansion that they're doing at Brookfield with the four corners, it makes a lot of sense for us to combine forces. And I think Kathy, I've kind of summarized it, right? But if there's anything that you'd like to add, um. Fair enough, right? Yeah. Any questions? Like we said, it's uh, uh, we're building off of some other kind of data that we've been collecting along that Route Seven corridor, and this just helps. The more data we get, the more um, attractive we are for these projects to get shovel-ready and, and hopefully actually start getting some funding to uh, build some of these um, necessary infrastructure improvements. So, that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. Item thirteen, recycling center.
Motion for discussion and possible action on the request from the recycle center to waive the service fees associated with their new point-of-sale system for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. These fees, which are estimated to be between a hundred and twenty and two hundred and forty dollars, will be covered by the recycle center budget.
Second.
Uh, this is a really great step forward, and I have to give Bob Hannah, our recycling coordinator, uh, down there, a lot of credit. We're actually gonna be able to accept credit card payments at the recycling center as opposed to, you know, getting tickets all the time and having to write a check. And I think it's gonna make it a lot more convenient and easier for people to use the recycling center for some of those um, uh, one-off type of deliveries instead of, uh, it's a little bit more burdensome what they have to do now. Bob, do you wanna add anything to that? You know, we're just waiving the fees so that we can get people started, and we could certainly absorb that couple of hundred dollars into our budget.
I just have a comment. I wanna say they also, um, Frank and I both were on the recycling subcommittee for a couple of years. It seemed like a very long time.
Like five years.
Yes, it was a long time. Uh, and this was discussed, and uh, the point-of-sale system and the software, Mike was there. We got, you know, came around to believing that it definitely needed to be done, but I wanna thank you for taking charge of that and making it happen.
Let me just say, the biggest obstacle in, in putting in a point-of-sale system was the town's
Yes.
uh, vendor Sage, dealing with Sage. It's very difficult to find vendors that deal with Sage, because and, and Sage handles all the private information. None of the private information is kept within the town, town files. So in order to find a company like that, uh, my experience with the garbage business, um, I, I met a gentleman up in Massachusetts called Tiger Processing. And uh, not only do they interface with Sage, but he also got us listed as a uh, utility. So our utility, the utility rate for processing is less than two percent. Hank and Goandow's one percent. So that's why the numbers that I gave you, those are based on fiscal year sixteen, seventeen numbers. Those, the, the twenty-four thousand dollars was the uh, the amount that we took in in credit cards. And that's at the town clerk's office, that's at the library, that's at Public Works. So by being able to take them down there, we're gonna be able to better see how many people would actually use that. It's going to save some man-hours. Um, you know, man-hours are not, may not be, you know, dollars and cents at the moment, but they, they do work. Um, and we're working on, you know, we're working on other improvements, uh, you know, as we go along. This, this was the first one, was trying to get a, get a system where we can better track exactly how many customers come in, what they're bringing in, uh, that kind of stuff, so.
Great.
Appreciate you.
That sounds great, yeah. Thank you, yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's gonna make a big, uh, big difference and keep, but it's a great success story, so keep up the great work down there. With that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks so much, Bob.
Thank you.
Alright, and now for the um, you know, the showstopper, you know, the, the big one. We've got the Library Modernization Committee. Do you guys wanna take a couple of minutes to set up?
That would be good.
Sure, let's take a five-minute recess, everybody. Thank you. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna come back to order. We are ready for our follow-up presentation from the Library Modernization Committee and the gentleman from Lawthrup and Associates. Gentlemen, you have the floor for your phase-two design development. And I'll turn off the lights so that we can see a little bit more.
Thank you very much for having us back here again. What we're looking at tonight is the design development portion of this project. When you do an architectural project, it starts with schematic design, and then goes to design development, and then goes to construction documents, then construction contractor bidding, and lastly, construction administration services. So where we are tonight is we're completing the design development package for the library. That means that all the pieces should be in place. The plan is pretty well fixed at this point, with the exception of any minor tweaks that, uh, or suggestions that we get that should be implemented. But uh, this is basically, we would expect this is basically the plan that the li, that the town will build. So with that, let's go forward. You all recognize the buildings now. There's the uh, original library on the left, which is eighteen ninety-six. Uh, the original house is uh, uh, date on that one, Bob. The Goodman House is always been referred to, okay? And, and in the picture, you can't see it, but behind the tree in the center is the uh, the nineteen seventy-seven edition. So our plan, it's gotta be awesome. Our plan our plan is to renovate and fully utilize the two existing original buildings and add a new, really, second floor on top of the existing um, nineteen seventy-seven edition, okay? At this point, we are not resolved on the color or the exterior finish for this, but what we're suggesting to you at this point is that the most cost-effective approach would be to do this in a synthetic stucco material. So it would look like a uh, like a limestone or like a uh, stucco that you're familiar with. So, it would look like a limestone or like a stucco that you're familiar with, but it has a little bit of texture, but certainly not the texture of the strong brick that's over here or the clavate siding over here. That's still up for discussion, but that's what the recommendation is, and the library The back of the library, the footprint stays pretty much the same as it is, but we're adding a new floor on top of that. This is a preliminary rendering to show what the back of that library would look like with the additional floor on. There's basically the line of the existing building addition, and by adding this on top, we think more consistent with the library, existing library buildings, and carrying a new finish down over the outside of that, we think we can bring this library much more into the character of the existing library and the character of the neighborhood surrounding This is a little hard to read, I know, but this is the site plan of the original Goodman House, the 1897 building, and 60, 57, 77 edition on the back, okay? From the site plan, we're really making very little change, with the exception of bumping out a little piece in the front of the building that will allow us to put a new elevator that goes, and new stairs that go up throughout the whole building, connect the whole new building. We're also taking, very simple thing, the existing front door currently is up a sidewalk that comes up to this portion of the library, and that happens to be four feet above the level that's down here. So, the simple, one of the problems with the library right now is that grade, that sidewalk up is too steep for ADA, to meet ADA requirements. So, by simply moving the entrance from there, four feet lower to here, we now have made this a fully compliant access to the library, and certainly have lowered the slope of that for the straight-in approach, okay? The back entrance will be made fully accessible, so the building, it will be accessible by this project. We're showing what parking could possibly fit in library property now, but that's not part of this project right at the moment. Let's go to the next one. Here's the existing first floor plan, main floor plan, and this is the sidewalk I was just talking about, coming up the steep grade to the existing front door. By simply moving that to here, we're coming in to the portion of the library where the lower part of the adult stacks are, and that solves the problem of accessibility. This is the plan, again, with the new entrance coming in to that 77 building, the original Goodman House being here, and the 97, 1897 building there, okay? By coming in, moving the entrance from here over to here, we are relocating not only the entrance, but the circulation desk, so when you come in, you're greeted right away by library staff. And directly opposite that is the elevator that gets you throughout the building. We're taking the children's area, which is kind of packed into this building, and moving it down to the ground level over in here. That gives us, right now, the double-level book stacks are right here. We're going to take off the upper level of those book stacks, and we're going to make this a two-story high space for the children, and we're coming back in then to the Goodman House. So, we've got the entrance to the children's right there, large open book stacks, directors and staff in the center of this, and more collection here and a program room for the children at that end. Off of this large area of stacks and collections will be another meeting room, program room for children, but it will also be shared by the young adults, which will now have their own dedicated place. Right now, they're kind of squeezed in in front of the bathroom and the elevator over in that hallway. This gives them a good dedicated facility right at the first level, and with staff from the children's and the young adult staff between both of those. The hallway coming down there is going to be enhanced by putting some nice shelving in here, and that will become the used book sale that generates some money for the library and recycles products, which we all like. So, coming in that front entrance, we can come up the elevator through a door there and come out the backside at the four feet higher that this existing floor is, or we can come up a new staircase right there to the, to the main level that connects all of this area now, okay? We're going to have an open area in the center there that will be a gallery, a gathering space, also a small self-service cafe with some comfortable seating there to try to encourage people to stay longer, to interact with other members of the community, be a little more social, be a little more engaged, and have a place where you can encourage to do that. This is the rear entrance coming in from the back parking lot. We're greeted by staff. This is primarily production, behind-the-scenes staff for bringing in new books, repairing books, and sending them back and forth to other libraries. We have two offices at this point with answer to library loans and circulation questions that you may have. The original library building will be converted. This is the children's area that's jam-packed right now. It's a lovely space with beautiful front windows, side windows, a fireplace in there, and we want to create an adult reading room in there. In the back of the existing building, back over in here, if you're very familiar with the library, you've probably noticed the very lovely historic stacks that are back here that are quite different from today's modern metal clip-on kind of stacks. So, we're bringing those stacks down into here so that we'll really be able to take advantage of those and use those as an asset to the library that it should have. Area right here will be AV collection, a popular destination at this point, adult In this age of high technology, that's something that, you know, may have a shelf life, as we all know, technology is changing. So, that is where AV will start. What it will go to in the future, we're not sure, but it gives us nice space in the adult We're maintaining the existing front entrance. We're maintaining and actually trying to restore the stair area going up to the upper floor. We'd like to take the original stained glass window that was in this location and move upstairs at an earlier date, and we'd like to restore it back down to this position. If you haven't seen it, you should go up to the second floor of the library, right off the meeting room, and see the lovely stained glass that's there. So, we think we've organized the ground floor in a very effective way, trying to get everybody instantly recognized when they come in, instantly directed when they come in, the children, the noisy area down here, the adult collections over here. We have a mezzanine in the existing building, but the mezzanine, as you recall, are two levels of stacks right here. It gives us nice, good floor area. The problem is that mezzanine-level floor is really a clip-on kind of system. It's supported by putting metal framing, metal flooring on top of the lower-floor stacks. So, the lower-floor stacks carry that floor level, and then the stacks above it are stacked on top of the lower-floor stacks. So, it's a great system for that kind of closed stack, kind of tight feel, but that's not what we're looking for in the library now. So, that flooring is, would not work. You can't put the children's area below it because, unless you want to maintain all of those existing adult stacks. So, that's not the way the library should go. Let's go to the next floor up. I'm going to hit that. This is that stack area I'm just talking about. This is the main, upper level of this 70s building addition. These are the stacks that are supported, that are above the stacks below, okay? So, that has to come out. That will become the new children's area, tall space. Now, let's go to the next one. The shaded area is the proposed floor plan for that mezzanine area. If you recall, in the library, the headroom underneath the stacks over here is relatively low. It's seven, seven and a half feet high. We are going to do the same type of thing, except with real construction that doesn't need to be supported by shelves below. We're going to come up the elevator, the new elevator and the new stairs, and at a midpoint that gets us just about eight feet above the floor below, we'll have library staff where they're readily accessible in the mix of things, but conveniently located there. The director's office and technical staff area, a conference room that will be used by library staff or used by reserved public. The staff will have bathrooms, more offices, and a small kitchen lounge area at the end. On the back of the existing building, there's a bump out that has a stair that went up to the upper-floor stacks right there. What we're doing with it now, since we're eliminating the stacks, we're going to bring that stair into a floor level that's up above the staff offices that were down below, and this will be mechanical equipment. So, we're putting all new HVAC equipment in, and that gives us a very effective and efficient location for that, okay? This is the upper level of the entry hallway. This is the upper level, upper space, much like this room of the young adult area, okay? Let's go up another. This is the 1897 building, upper floor. That's the main auditorium that's up there, the main reading room, conference room, stair coming up to it, the elevator, the existing elevator and the existing stairs. The rest is the roof on the 1977 edition, okay, and the roof on the Goodman House. Go to the next one. There we are in the main meeting room, auditorium space. This is the building addition that we're putting on to the building on top of the roof below. You'll get to it by that stair that comes all the way up from the lobby, or the, or that elevator, or the stairs that I showed you going around like that will get us up here. This will be a large reading room, open reading room, opening out onto Main Street and the Village Green. In the back, there are windows, but they're high windows so that we're not intruding on the neighbors in the backyard. New stack area there, a new meeting room, boardroom there. A mixture of different types of rooms for public usage. This one is a fairly large room. This is a medium-sized room. These are smaller group rooms. So, we're trying to get a good mix for all the diverse needs that the public is looking for, to encourage you to go there, use the space for your group functions or your individual library needs. This area will probably be mostly adult fiction. Off to this side will be adult nonfiction, adult reference, which, not so much left of, a lot of adult reference, but a lot of nonfiction is probably there. We're putting individual desks around the room for you to go in and sit by yourself and work on a computer, work on your project, your private work, and we're trying to get a variety of those and separating them around the library so there's different atmospheres. This, while it's a reading room, would be expected to have some conversation, and there's a circle, there's a reference desk right there, so there'd be some level of conversation. There'd be some level of people going through that space. These study areas over here would be the quietest of them all. We're trying to be very cognizant of being able to always feel safe in the library, so everything, all the stacks are oriented in a way to avoid hidden areas, closed areas, so it's, the atmosphere will be safe, welcoming, open, visible, and we think that's critically important to a, to a good, healthy library. Staff is located throughout several areas of the upper floor, so it's, they're there for help, assistance, and to, as I say, provide a comfortable, safe environment. We have a small terrace out on the front that you saw in the rendering, and it's got a roof overhang that's on both the back for shading, so these windows are not blasting sunlight. These are, there's an area where you could sit out under shade. Three individual user restrooms. They will permit the use of caregiver to assist. They're all ADA compliant, so we have full accessibility and full accommodations for everybody. Again, on this upper level, that's envisioned to be a meeting space, a breakout space for the, for the main auditorium here. And while it's not easy to, or simple to keep, to close this off, we're trying to make it as simple as we can so that for after-hours uses, this can serve as a breakout room. And by closing and locking those doors and pulling down a gate there, locking that door, this area becomes secure for after-hours use and takes you down the elevator or the stairs to the, to the front door. An additional meeting, breakout, boardroom over in here. So, that's pretty much the floor plan as the library has developed with us. This is a preliminary rendering of that upper floor reading room, walking into that, to the reference desk that's there. These were those high windows on the back that I was suggesting would not look into the neighbor's yard, but would let the morning sunshine come in. These are the study areas along that outside wall. This goes back into the adult fiction stack area, and this is that meeting room, boardroom with the with the window wall and the terrace just out of the view of this, this picture. So that's, that's the plan for it. It's on budget, as we had talked about before. It's on area, just like we've talked about before, and I think it's been thoroughly reviewed by the library staff and the library committees, but there will still be some minor tweaks that will happen as the next phase construction documents are done, but we think we've really zeroed in on a really good plan for providing the space that New Milford should have and gets you up to at least a mid-level of square footage per resident in the community based on Connecticut standards. Judy has worked out furniture and finishes that we're developing for this, so that's all included in this, and included, the finishes are included in the numbers we've talked about. Any questions?
Yeah, is there any questions? Mr. Richardson.
So the front seat that you're talking about lowering that grade level, is that also gonna include from the sidewalk down to the road level, because there is that steep there?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about. If you can remember what it looks like, right now, the sidewalk does come up here, quite steep at that point, and then it goes up quite steeply up and turns a corner, and it comes in at this upper level right here, which is, well, excuse me, it's right there, four feet higher than this entrance. When you, when you go into the library next time, look at the, when the walls down closer to the Goodman House, you'll see the floor level down there. That's what gets us in here at that.
How far is that gonna go? Because that steep level of sidewalk pretty much runs all the way down to the street, so you're gonna go from the corner, and then how far down just past the Goodman House?
We're not envisioning changing anything on your street sidewalk here. We're just envisioning connecting from that existing street sidewalk up to the new entrance as opposed to there, and we're probably gonna have to just slightly change the slope of the existing sidewalk over there to make sure that this is fully compliant with ADA.
Isn't there a steep from the street up to the sidewalk?
No. If you look at the picture, you'll see.
So it's just that front area?
Yes, yes.
Just like a vehicle get a leg up then.
You're talking about when you park your car.
Yeah, when you park your car, then you have to walk off.
And you walk to the sidewalk.
So I didn't know if it was just gonna be straight just at that one sidewalk point, or if they were gonna expand that down further.
You'll still have to walk up, though, when you get out of your car, right?
To the corner.
Well, if you were parking right in front of the library right here, yes, that's a very steep slope. It's a steep slope, and there's nothing we can do with that.
But it's a smaller than walking all the way to the door.
And then, I know you're not at construction yet, but we had brought it up at an earlier meeting, depending on how you were gonna go in phases, that if you close off that center phase to do construction, that it would leave an accessibility issue with people who are handicapped, because you only have that stairs to that front entrance. So I don't know if anyone's kind of discussed that at all, or if that's gonna impact how you go about your construction phase.
Well, I don't think that's been decided yet. We've, we've given the library some numbers, some costs for what we believe, what our cost estimator believes the difference in construction cost would be for phasing the renovation of the library. If we phase it, the general thought is we would keep this area of the library, if you can see my pointer, we'll keep that area of the library in operation, separating off with the temporary wall down there, and renovating this whole portion and building this whole portion in phase one. And when that is done and open here, this can then be closed off and renovated. So it will provide access for limited services and for everybody, including people with disabilities. They would have to come in the rear door to get into that, but, okay. There's a fair, big difference in cost between the two, and so I think that's still being discussed, which approach to take.
Mr. Esposito.
Thank you. What's the current occupancy, the occupancy level at the library? What can it max at? What is it, can it maximize the building right now? How many people?
In the whole building?
In the whole building currently as it's configured?
I can sum that up to, I know I think more than all people, 132, so the entire building.
You mean if they still show up?
When it's completed, what would be the occupancy? Do you guys know?
It would increase about 50%.
About 50%? What are we looking at for parking going down the line? I know it's in the Village Center. We already have a precise parking issue, so are we? And that's why you didn't really touch on that, so.
Well, I'm not sure what your, what the legal issues are at this point in time with that property, so.
We weren't sure that it would be available to us, and we didn't want to push the cost of the parking into the library building project.
Right.
We did have some cost estimates on that, I think it was like $88,000. We were going to take down the barns and use the back part of that property.
How much was the estimate for that?
Well, it wasn't a firm estimate from anybody. It was just a ballpark that somebody gave us, maybe $88,000 for, for that.
That's to take down the barn and pave it?
I'm not sure.
Or gravel it?
Making parking lots.
But, no, no cost, depending on the kind of materials they use for the, you know, for the.
Right, just because you're increasing the occupancy, and obviously it's gonna be really, very attractive, people are gonna flock there, we just need to have a plan.
Yeah, it varies, though.
Oh yeah, of course.
You just keep going, and if people keep going here and out, so you're not gonna have 200 people in there in one time.
You never know, you may get real popular. This is beautiful. All right, so back to you guys. The 435, do you have a breakout of exactly what those costs are within the 435?
Yes.
Drawings, MEPs, everything. Can you share that with us, so we can get a sense on it? I mean, it's 435,000, and my follow-up question to that is, how far does the 435 take us? I mean, 435 is a pretty substantial number for a building of this size, and is this gonna take us over the finish line, or you guys gonna be back here for more money? Not, not for the building, but for the architects and the engineers.
The 435 is the next phase of architectural services, okay? We started with a conceptual design, then we went on to schematic design, then we went on to design development. Now we're going to construction documents. That's where all the bidding documents, all the construction documents will be prepared. Subsequent to that, we would have helping you with bidding and retaining a contractor, and lastly, construction administration assistance.
So you're, it's CM or CMA with assistance? Is it construction management?
We are not construction managers. We're not proposing that. We're proposing traditional architectural services to work in association with your construction manager or a general contractor.
Do you have an idea of what the additional costs are gonna be after the 435? Because you had a certain amount to develop this, now we're at 435.
Let me give you, let me give you a breakdown. The schematic design is typically 15% of our fee. The design development is typically 20% of our fee. Construction documents typically get us to 75, 75% complete. Bidding is another 5%, and construction administration is 20%.
So there's another 25% that'll be tacked on to this after this.
That's right. If you want us to help with that, which I certainly would think we should.
Any other questions? Mr. Bass.
How long do you foresee the build-out, depending on which way you go?
Bob, do you have Charlie's numbers on that one?
So, in the unfazed scenario, where it's a single effort from start to finish, it's projected to take 12 to 15 months. If we staged the construction, as Jim described, partitioning the north side off, occupying that, and then building up the south side, and then coming back to finish the north side, that would add probably another three to four months of construction, primarily to, you know, take down the staging wall and move things sequentially, instead of pouring all the concrete at once or pouring some beginning and some end, so you add that kind of complexity when you stage the project. So another three to four months is.
Have you had experience where you've done one on the other, or have you had experience where you've done both?
So, right now, we're finishing up a project in Montrose, which is an existing library, where they remained in operation, but closed down a portion of it to sequence the construction. So that meant thinking strategically about where the contractor comes and goes on a daily basis, how you keep safety, maintain safety around the project site. So, you know, it was pretty successful. It was done in the nick of time for the brand opening last week, and there were no casualties. It was pretty successful over there.
I would say by far and away, the majority of our projects are renovations and additions to libraries that remain in operation. But my gut reaction to this one is it would sure be a lot quicker and simpler and cheaper if we could find somewhere to provide abbreviated library services for the construction period of this. Public's gonna be safer, it's gonna save a lot of, a lot of moving and be much quicker, less money.
That's something you and the committee are working on now, to come back with that solution.
That's right.
Have you guys talked a little bit about who the GC is gonna be? Is it gonna be?
I would expect this would be a competitively bid, public bid situation, where you would expect to get bids from qualified contractors.
Which you're gonna help write the bids for?
Yes.
That's part of your fee that you're charging.
That's, that's right, that's.
And then who would be, you guys talked about who would be your clerk of the works? Are you guys anticipating it'd be the town itself or somebody else?
We would expect that the typical library project wouldn't necessarily have a clerk of the works, but it would have us doing periodic inspections, and they would be informing us of their schedule before they proceed, and we'd be able to review it, but.
And is that scope of work in what you're talking about now, or is that an additional cost?
No, that's, that is what's in the, that's right. So I, I don't think you have to have it. I, I would suggest that perhaps if you did the phased renovation, construction of the building while the library's in operation, it may be more critical to have somebody there, because then we're, we have the public involved in the site while construction is going on. But if the, if the library is basically shut down for a one-phase construction, I think it would be, again, much simpler and cheaper and safer to do.
Mr. Richardson.
Can I just ask, if you were gonna do the one-phase, I know you probably haven't had a lot of conversation, but if the library shut down for 12 to 15 months, what are your thoughts of, what would you do? Because he said unfazed, it would take about 12 to 15 months to complete, so if you were shut down during that time, do you guys have a plan of?
We're hoping to find some available space in town to do a modified operation of the library.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I'm not sure where this is, but the JPS that has that library center, if you guys could move in there for.
I was just thinking, we've got space, you know, yeah, at the community center, absolutely.
We're trying to find some space where we wouldn't be charged rent or.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Teddy bomb would be great. Perfect, perfect solution.
Joyce.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. She's raising a point about hazmat, hazardous material inspection, testing and inspections. Whether we have a clerk of the works or don't have a clerk of the works, those are fees that, if we don't, if we have a clerk of the works, those fees are not in our number right now. So there, and at this point, we have the interior design and all building finishes would be put in there, but we don't have a number yet at this point for additional shelving, additional furniture. That can be estimated, but it hasn't been yet, okay? So there are costs for that, unless you want to just relocate and reuse existing furniture initially, and then, over a period of time, transform it.
Just reminders, I should have this number. How much have we spent so far, you know, to get to this point? Do you have an idea of, what have we spent?
162 plus 216.
162 plus 216. I'm sorry? Okay, so we're about 400,000 in. Excellent. Mr. Wargo.
Yeah, just, you have no numbers for the phase-in versus going to another location? A ballpark?
Preliminary, we have. If you're only talking $10,000, do it, yeah. I don't think you're gonna talk $10,000. So. To phase the construction and remain in place is about 580,000 versus 551,000 miscellaneous expenses, including relocation costs and temporary rental of 350, so it's about a $200,000 difference to stay here, stay in place.
Who's the hope of a project that's?
That's, that's not much money.
Yeah.
If, if you, if you had your choice, you think the library would run more efficiently in place or at a new location?
I think, I, I have, honestly frank, I can't answer that because I've never experienced it, but my feeling, my gut feeling, is that I'm looking at time. No matter what, we're going to have limited services for a period of time while the construction is happening, and I'd like to keep that as short as possible. So that's why personally I favor moving.
My guess is that if you locate somewhere else temporarily, even if it's only a year, you're gonna be accustomed. People, people like the habit of going to the library, even though it's partial, it's where I always go. To go on the other side of town, I, so.
Thank you. That's prob, that's probably true, but there has never been a library renovation or building that was built that didn't have a giant influx increase when it.
Yeah, I'm totally aware of that.
Okay. Ms. Francis.
The cost for moving, which I know you have, that's, that's in there, right? And storage of the furniture and the books?
So, right now, the budget.
You don't have to tell me much of this one, I would exclude it.
Yeah.
Right?
So it's 200 to rent a space, depending on where the space is, if it's free.
May have to, yeah, spend that all.
It's a premium, it's 200, and relocation is 150.
Mr. Bear.
Talking about library modernization is making me old. We have talked about this and talked about this and talked about this for years. I remember one year we lost a $500,000 grant because we sat on our hands and didn't do anything. You talk about jewels, you know, you got Lynn, Lynn Deming Park you talk about, it's a jewel. You got the turf fields, it's a jewel. To me, any community that has a modern library is a jewel, and it goes beyond books. It's a quanticaopia of things, whether. Whether it's movies, whether it's technology, um.
Just reading, just sitting.
Whether it's hard times, it becomes a general store where people migrate to. And you know, it's not gonna cost the taxpayer a dollar. I'm all for this. Let's do it.
Ms. Lundgren.
I just wanted to, that's all right. I just wanted to comment that in the original, in the, in the original eighteen ninety-six building, Mr. Kavalski can tell us, because he's part of that group. The state of Connecticut has a state historical restoration.
Preservation.
Preservation office?
Of Shippo.
Yeah, Shippo. And, um, they told us about ten or twelve years ago that there's money in the state of Connecticut, I don't know if it's still there or not, that they would renovate the mosaics in the, um, the original building. Um, floor mosaics in front of the fireplace in the main lobby. They would restore, um, lighting, traditional lighting. They would restore the woodwork, which is now pickled and old. Um, and maybe Mr. Kavalski can tell us more about that. But that would be a savings of money for us.
So, both the eighteen ninety-seven building and the Goodman House are historic buildings. If, for no other reason than the fact that they're older than fifty years. And so they fall into the category of being, you know, magnetic to, you know, places like Connecticut, Shippo. Shippo will fund on an ongoing basis, if you have the right kind of application, restoration of the protected exteriors. So the brick, the stone, the windows, the doors, the chimney, the roofing, slate roofing, right? Cladboard, shutters, even paint. Things that you see on the, on the exterior that you can touch and feel. Hardware, light fixtures that you can see inside and outside. Those sorts of things. And once Shippo is in for a dime, as long as you keep showing that you're, uh, have a vested interest in the facility, they have a vested interest in it, in seeing it through to completion. So it's, you know, it's a never-ending process as long as you have the, the energy to keep applying to these grants.
We're in year three of that, of the same process up in Madison, Connecticut for, um, an eighteen six, eighteen fifties captain's house that's been converted to a school and resident facility for children with autism. And, um, it's been quite good, year after year.
Ms. Lundgren and then Ms. Richardson.
Um, I just wanna say, I wanna commend you on the design. I really like the design. I think it fits in beautifully, you know, with the other, with the two buildings. And I think it's gonna fit in really nicely on the green. It's a, it's a very nice design. And I think you should really explore the possibility of, of, and talk with the mayor of moving, um, to Pettibone temporarily. If you can save two hundred thousand dollars, it's two hundred thousand dollars that we can use to further the project and do more things. So I think that would be, and I think in, in view of safety issues and with all the ripping out and the materials you may come across, it might be a better option for the public to be in a different building. And we've got the resources to put you somewhere else, so I think we should use them.
Ms. Richardson.
Just a quick question. So if this is approved, when would you, in just being able to actually get the building phase?
Well.
Then like a ballpark, even throw one out, I mean.
Okay, March?
March of this year?
To bid.
Or twenty eighteen?
Yeah, yeah. And then probably two to two and a half months for bidding, maybe three months to go to contract.
So like somewhere you can start?
Breaking around.
It'd be Labor Day, the latest.
I just wanna thank you guys. You know, it's, it's been an incredible journey to get here. And now, just for the committee, I wanna thank them and I wanna thank Lothrup for actually working with us. I mean, I really, I need to emphasize that, you know, everybody, the, the opinion originally was that you weren't able to go up over that nineteen seventies addition, that, you know, you had to go out and it was going to be a lot more logistically complicated. And being able to figure out a way to go up, keep the same footprint. And I think like, um, Mary Jane had said, addressing this really kind of anachronism in our town where I don't think anybody's really happy with, you know, this great eighteen nineties house, or, I mean, you know, building. And then, you know, the Goodman House and then this nineteen seventies edition that really looks like a nineteen seventies edition. So I think, you know, addressing that anachronism and making them look like they flow a little bit more and belong on the green at the end of the day is something that's gonna change the entire character of the town, of the downtown. And then everything that you're doing inside and meeting the needs of the community. I mean, it's, it's really great. And I know that the committee has put a tremendous amount of work and effort into this. So, uh, I wanna thank you all. And it's, it's really fantastic and beautiful and exciting at the end of the day. It's really, really innovative to take that hill away. I think that's genius, but it seems like one of those things. Now that you see it, why didn't we think of it before? But, uh, it takes looking at it a different way to do it sometimes, so tremendous job. Thank you, guys. Yeah, great job. So with that being said and not seeing any, let's move on to item B and, uh.
So I just wanted to say one thing about twelve or fourteen years ago. Um, and I wanted to thank Lothrup for, first of all, for, uh, doing such a good job on being conservative with the design and using the existing facility so well. But I wanted to say about fourteen years ago, Frank Wargo and I had a little talk out in the lobby about when we tried to get this project going so long ago. And he said, why don't you go up over the top of the existing building? Well, here we are. We're all, but thank you, Frank. Um, so we're here. Sal, did you wanna say anything?
Not really. I just wanted to thank all of you because you've been so supportive over these past two years. And it's been hard for everyone, I know that. You know, my position as a staff member, I'm not gonna bore you with that. But I do wanna read you a letter that was actually addressed to you on our Facebook page today. And it says, "As I have been a resident of Millford since nineteen seventy-eight, I have come to love so many aspects of the community," capitalized. "Of particular note is our library. There is no question that modernization is badly needed. And after reviewing the plans, I am so excited by how the architects have managed to so well blend the old and the new. It is in keeping with the beautiful work done by individual property owners of restoring many of the buildings in downtown Millford. My husband and I are fervent in our belief that books are the main catalyst to increased understanding and knowledge. There is hardly a bigger need in these times. Please consider this email our strenuous report for this library project and was addressed to all of you."
Excellent, great.
So, you know, our patrons out there too, as you can see.
Yes, absolutely.
So, here.
That's it, that's all I have.
We're here to ask you if you would fund the next phase of the project, which is the construction document phase in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
And that was recommended unanimously by the, uh, modernization committee, correct? Yes. Okay, very good. So we can move on to item B. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for discussion and possible action on request for authorization to appropriate the expenditure of four hundred and thirty-five thousand from the Waste Management Fund. Funding will be used and expended for phase three of the modernization project.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to call for a roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call vote, okay.
So just to show them how enthusiastic we are.
Yes, yes, all right. Mr. Bass, we'll start with you and go around.
Aye.
Ms. Richardson.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Absolutely, aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much. And just so that is out there, there's approximately twelve point five million dollars in the waste management accounts. So, um, we are in very good shape and it is being invested and earning interest as we speak as well. So, uh, with that being said, item C. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for discussion and possible action on the creation of a temporary committee to modernize and proceed with construction of the library renovation. This temporary committee will consist of fifteen members and with a term of six months.
Second. Yes, Ms. Francis.
Oh, maybe you were gonna say it.
Yeah, I was.
You're gonna, is it, it's not, just to be clear, it's not another committee?
Well, this one, um, expires on November first. And I think, yeah, so as we're getting into the construction phase now, how many people were on the original committee? It was nine. So did a tremendous amount of work and a great job getting to this point. But I think now that we're getting to the construction phase, the scope of the committee is starting to get broader. We've got, um, construction, uh, so when we were talking about this with Joyce and Michael Gold, we were saying it's, uh, it's a great opportunity to bring in some other people that have construction background, but also really importantly fundraising backgrounds. I know that hasn't been something that has, um, really been, um, front and center, but it could and it certainly should be.
That question to the committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Fundraising, we've talked a lot about capital, campaign.
Sure, sure. Having, you know, some subcommittees that could do that and bringing people in that have that kind of experience is a great opportunity. And it just takes a little bit of that weight off of the nine people that have gotten us to this point. So that's where we came up with the fifteen-member committee to take us to the next level. Uh, Mr. Bass.
One of the things in this library modernization construction committee, appreciate you guys following the process. And, uh, I appreciate the fact we're gonna have construction people on there. I know we're doing the turf construction committee. It's a very valuable asset to have those members that have construction experience there.
We did on the last committee.
Yeah, that's great.
To reach back at architects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Uh, so with that creation, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion for a jury, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much, everybody. Great job.